President.
Council Finn.
Present.
Council Hugh.
Present.
Council Lars.
Present.
Council Meehan.
Present.
President.
President. All right, we have a forum, Council Crowell, Paul Loung, and Ray Lee, so you can briefly detain me if you'll be here and I expect for the conference to get started. We have some guests tonight, so I want to get right to it. The only official item on our agenda, other than all that matters, and even oversight committee, is 2016-15, in order related to the underground economy, the misclassification of employees on construction sites, which was introduced by Council Finn and Council Debona. Just to kind of lay out what we're going to be doing tonight, I anticipate that we'll have several oversight committee hearings on this matter. The purpose of tonight was really for a bit of an introduction. We do have, I invited two individuals to make presentations in the meeting this evening, and to answer questions that we may have. The first was Cynthia Mark from the Attorney General's Office of Fair Labor and Justice Practices. Unfortunately, Ms. Mark was unable to make it tonight, and due to a long-term vacation she had planned, but she will join us on another night to discuss this topic. And with us this evening, we also have Mark Erland, the Executive Secretary and Treasurer of New England Regional Council of Carpenters. Thank you for being here. Before we get started, invite Mark up. I have a good note that Council Crowell and Council Kane are both present. I'd just like to turn it over to Council Finn, if you have any words of introduction on toward him, Council Debona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I want to thank you with the due haste that you did in taking up this matter brought in beginning of this year. We actually brought it in last year, but as the concession closed, we weren't able to get to it. And I'm so happy and excited that we're starting off this particular year with it. I think it should be clear about this evening, I don't see this evening as anything but the beginning of a closer examination of this issue. And the end game, what I'm hoping is that we might have some better understanding about the problem that we're trying to rectify or deal with here, but also that we might move towards a, some type of ordinance that can withstand judicial scrutiny, that will actually address what I consider to be a significant problem. I don't think it's any secret that that the city of Quincy is undergoing a significant amount of development. We have a number of very large residential projects. We know that we're focused on the downtown. And I think that a key component of that development has always been, I know at least from my own perspective, is that it should benefit all the citizens of Quincy, not just a few. Not just those who stand to profit from such development, but that it adds to our entire community, including the various working families and working people of the city of Quincy. This is a problem that we've seen demonstrate before us in the past. It's interesting that there was a particular project back in 2006, that was pretty apparent that had a great amount of undocumented labor on that particular site, that particular job. And I remember actually participating in a picket at that particular point in time with the carpenters' union. My concern is that, here it is, a decade later, and those situations have not improved, perhaps they may have even worsened. And again, it's critical, what we're talking about here this evening is the underground economy, it's about the misclassification of employees. And make, make no mistake about this, this is not a union versus a non-union type of situation. This is about a fair, just, and economically appropriate way of dealing with development in the city of Quincy. What we're really about is people who are breaking the law, and that that's something that really needs to be addressed. And I think that we, as a city council, who are engaged in some of these projects, need to be particularly vigilant about that it doesn't happen in a city with the community standards that we have had here for so long. This is something that affects not just union shops, this is something that affects even non-union shops, because it becomes very difficult to be able to compete. There's an unfair advantage when people cheat. If people are paying under the table, if people are misclassifying employees, if people are using sophisticated contracting schemes, all something to avoid, what should be being paid in the usual course of business, then we have a serious issue. As I said, this evening is really not the end, this is just the beginning. And I think that we really need to take a close look at this, and to make certain that those types of practices don't take place. We've heard about it in one particular case, if we remember, there was a project that Avalon had put forward, and we heard some really pretty significant testimonies from the SEIU at that particular point in time, about people who went unpaid, about unsafe work conditions, about people taking shortcuts, that actually threatened not only the safety of those employees, but the quality of the construction that takes place as well. These are all reasons in my own mind for grave concern, and that I am grateful to you, Mr. Chairman, that you have aggressively taken this particular matter up. I'm very honored and happy here that Mark Erland from the carpenters' union is here to speak, to present before us this evening. And again, hopefully, all of us who have questions, or who want to learn more about this particular situation, will be able to do that this evening. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, if I could, I want to thank, and I don't know if I can turn it over to my colleague, Mo Debona, who immediately upon coming upon the council, wanted to participate in this as a co-sponsor, so I would yield to my colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like just to echo the words of my Council Finn next to me. This has been an issue that while campaigning, many people, non-union, union, have come up to me and asked me, "What are you going to do when you get on the council?" And it was something that was on the agenda before being elected. And I would tell you that, really for me, it's about enforcement. What do you do when you do catch somebody that's not supposed to be on the job, that's illegal? What are we going to do about that? That's the main issue for me. And I'd really just like to listen to what you have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Debona. And I got those, the sentence that my colleague made. First, can I, now the clerk, if we know for the record that the president used racist for presences. I too agree with what Council Finn said. Quincy's a blue collar, working class city. We have to make sure that we do what we can to protect those types of jobs in our community. And ensuring we create a fair playing field for all is paramount to that. We should do, and I would suggest we must do, whatever we can to beat the cheats. And I suggest that this, this body will do that. But the purpose of this first meeting relative to this measure is kind of a fact-finding stuff, is to get some additional information about the underground economy, what we're dealing with, what the facts around them are, as can be presented to us, so that we can come up with some, as Council Finn said, some additional language that will be sustained in a court of law, so that we can help combat this, this issue, and certainly, at the very least, our. So, without further ado, Mark, come on up. Thank you very much. Rick, did you want to?
Yeah.
For the record, Rick, you retired, what, five years ago?
I've retired about eighteen months now. Through the chair and through the council, thanks for having us here tonight. I know most of you, I've had lengthy conversations with many of you about the issue that we're discussing tonight. We enthusiastically endorse the ordinance, we couldn't be happier. If anybody's been paying attention realizes that when Governor Patrick was in office, he actually convened a task force looking at the underground economy. Previous and current Attorney General's allocated manpower and money to do enforcement for us. And despite all those efforts, despite everything we've tried to do over the years, it seems like the problem, as Council Finn said, is worse now than it seemed to be. We looked back in 2006, there was a project up the street, that we did have a picket line on, and it was kind of an aberration of that. At that point, you had guys sweeping on the project and dance around the surrounding streets. And the project, the problem would become worse and worse and worse and worse. Our staff, thankfully, got a program to try to lighten communities that are facing a problem, looking out for the blue collar people in their districts. And toward that end, we thought maybe we could enlighten you guys, and shed some light on the subject, and let Mark take it away.
Thank you, appreciate it, Rick.
Retired but not forgotten. First of all, let me thank Council Palmuji and Council Finn in particular, and all of you for doing this. I think this is a pretty extraordinary event, and we very much appreciate your time. But I have to say, I think it's a pretty extraordinary problem, and I think it behooves the Quincy City Council taking this kind of time and this kind of attention. We've done this at the City Walthing, with their city council, this presentation, and have done it many times. It's been a particular concern of mine for 20 years now, watching a, I think, once proud industry really be damaged by the growth of the underground economy. With the decline of manufacturing in the United States, construction remains one of the few ways to make it into the middle class without ecologification. And if construction, as it seems, being undermined, there are fewer and fewer options to do that. So, with that, what I'm going to do tonight is a presentation we prepared for you. It's on the screen, it's a little awkward for all of you, your necks will, don't blame me if your neck gets sore tomorrow morning.
We'll pay for it.
Okay, great. Very good. And I'll sort of start at the 30,000-foot level, and then bring it home to Quincy. So, I don't think people realize how significant the underground economy is in the United States. A study done in 2011 indicated that there's an estimated $2 trillion, that's trillion with a T, dollars of unreported income. When you think about the budget deficits that our federal government faces, the budget deficits that our municipality faces, state governments, when you think about this level of unreported income, and then were it simply to be reported, and, and the appropriate taxes collected, just imagine all of the problems that the city of Quincy and other municipalities have been through over the course of time. So, it is in a number of industries across the board, primarily service sector, landscaping, retail, restaurants, nail salons, probably, you know, auto body shops, that kind of thing. But the single, the industry that is the largest, that is the most impacted, is the industry of construction, which by the way, represents 5% of our gross investment product. So it is a major industry, and therefore has a major impact on our society. As Council Finn said, this is not a union, non-union issue, this is a public policy issue. And it's in that vein that I come before you tonight. In construction, the way that this plays out, is that people who are functioning in every single respect as employees, are either classified as independent contractors, which is a form of, the legal term is misclassification, they are not independent contractors. Being an employee means that you take direction, and you work for someone, the materials you use, the tools you use are supplied by somebody else, that is really the nature definition of construction. But they're called independent contractors, and/or increasingly, with the growth of immigrant workforce and undocumented workforce, it's simply just, they don't even bother with the niceties of independent contractors, they just pay cash. Why do they do that? Because in construction, which is a highly competitive industry, there's materials and there's labor. Materials cost the same for everybody, so if you want to underbid somebody, the only way to do it is really by, by saving costs on labor. So you can pay them a small amount, but typically, if you pay little, your productivity is less, and you'll get less. So the other thing you can do is by instead of treating someone as employee and paying all the legally required taxes and insurances, you call them an independent contractor and just pay them cash. The savings are in workers' compensation insurance, which is a significant, because of the dangers of construction, and all of the federally and state required mandated taxes. The estimates are that somewhere between 25% and 30% in savings. If you're paying someone $20 an hour, and you're treating him as employee, $20 an hour as independent contractor, the latter employer will save somewhere between 25% and 30%, which is a competitive advantage that simply can't be beat. Why is it so common in construction? Well, because of the mobility of the job start, the end, the workforce moves, it's very easy to track, and there's multiple layers of contractors and subcontractors. And increasingly, as you're going to see tonight, what happens is there's a general contractor on a job with subcontractors out of the work, and that subcontractor in turn will subcontract and subcontract to labor brokers, and multiple tiers, by the time you have no idea who's working for who. And even the workers often don't know who they're paying at the end of the week, maybe if they're lucky. So, it is also because of the growth of the undocumented workforce in construction, these are men and women who because of their uncertain legal status, are vulnerable to exploitation by unscrupulous and irresponsible contractors who are prepared to take advantage of them. So, there was, I worked, I worked with a group of people from Harvard, and back in the early 2000s, to do a study, to indicate that this was, again, a public policy problem, and not simply a union concern. And what we, there was a study that was done, actually it was with the cooperation of the Romney administration at the time. The Department of Romney gave us data, and the folks from Harvard and University of Massachusetts did a study, that ended up concluding in 2004, that destruction misclassification of the type that I'm describing, could range up to 1 in 4, or 24% of construction employers. Now, when you think about it, that's an astonishing figure, because, and again, I don't, this is not a union or non-union issue, but union companies, by virtue of the collective bargaining agreements, have to pay all the legally required taxes. So if you take them out of the equation, and leave the rest of the universe, we're talking about half, two-thirds really, of the, of the employer universe is guilty of this kind of activity. So what are the consequences? Well, back in 2004, if you look at the two years of 2001 to 2003, there was an estimated $103.6 to $187 million lost to the state in unreported income tax and unemployment insurance tax. That doesn't necessarily, was lost to the federal tax coffers, and just think what an extra $100 to $2 million could have done for the state. Those numbers have become more significant since the recession in 2008 to 2010 amplified this problem, because the dynamic was to increase the level of competition for jobs, and so people went to the bottom line to get more and more unscrupulous in terms of their activities. In addition, $91 million is lost to insurance carriers. Now, many people may not be that concerned about the faith in insurance carriers, but nonetheless, they're entitled to get workers' compensation premiums under the law. That's, that is the law, it's legally required, and there's, so you can see the consequences. There's money lost to the business community, money lost to legitimate companies that play by the rules, money lost to the state, money lost to the feds, and all of this simply because the underground economy is allowed to run rampant in the construction industry. One of the things that I've done in this presentation, I did this for the Senate President and a group of state senators, in arguing the case for enforcement. As the counselor here indicated, the issue of enforcement is critical, if, and it's money well spent, because this is done by the state of Washington, so we can take it separately from Massachusetts, kind of like Massachusetts, but this is a national problem. And the estimate in 2014 for the state of Washington was that for every dollar that was spent on enforcement, $8.36 was returned to the state economy. So this is by every stretch of imagination, a wise and prudent investment, and not only is it the right thing to do, but it is financially prudent for the state to do as well. So, that's sort of, again, the 30,000-foot picture. What has happened in Quincy? Quincy's experiencing a significant amount of development in the wake of the recession. The overflow of the activity that's happening in Boston is happening, Quincy, both in residential and commercial, people want to live in Quincy, it's an exciting city, it's a city that is proximate to the city of Boston, the Red Line service, it makes it an attractive place to build and to live, and to do business. So I'm just going to focus on four jobs, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with. One of them happens to be this building here, in Connington Hall, which was done, completed by Nossip Construction. And the other three are private jobs, one is Zero Penn Street, done by Callahan Inc., the third one is 1400 Hancock down the street, and the last one is the Quincy YMCA, which I know has been a source of a lot of controversy for some city councils, for a lot of residents in this community. So I'm going to go one by one, just because, you know, all of these broad-brush allegations and statements that I'm making, what I want to do is have you understand that this is happening right here, right here in Quincy, and that we will, we can demonstrate that. This, I'm speaking, by the way, I should say strictly about carpentry trades, not because that's all I care about, I care about all the trades, but we simply know more, our focus is on that world. I would say this is prevalent in all of the unlicensed trades, in painting, in roofing, in laboring, this is a, this is a common problem. Less so with the licensed trades, simply because of the presence of licensing. So let's talk about Connington Hall. City Quincy obviously is the owner, Nossip was a general contractor. For the carpentry work, they used a subcontractor named R. and A. Drywall. It also has had, as you'll find, a lot of these companies, they have multiple names, it's not like Dragnet, they don't change their names to protect the innocent, they change their names to protect the guilty. So this is also known as RH Taylor, National Drywall, and a whole host of other names that we're not even familiar with. They, this company pled guilty to tax evasion in 2010. In, on this job alone, it was a prevailing wage job because it was publicly funded, they had to make $64,000 in restitution to workers who were underpaid, and a $7,500 penalty. Or more, R. and A. Drywall has paid more than $200,000 in fines and restitution since 2014. This is a problem, shall be. We have heard about this company for years, every single job they cheat on, every single job they take advantage of workers on, and they have been, thankfully, barred, as in 2014. That is unfortunately uncommon, the, the level of enforcement, while the attentions are good, has really not lived up to the depth of the problem. On Zero Penn Street, the owner there was Cabot Cabin de Forest, the general contractor was Callahan Inc. out of Bridgewater, who was sort of notorious for being a problem contractor and using, this is not an exception, this is Callahan's business model, this is how they get jobs. They underbid legitimate contractors, union and non-union, by virtue of taking advantage of the underground economy. So their subcontractors on that job were carpentry subcontractors for Universal Drywall and Metro Walls, two companies that are notorious, again, for participating in this kind of practice. They use, Universal had a second-tier sub, and what I mean by second-tier subs, is typically what will happen is a company like Universal will get the contract from Callahan. And the contract will be nice and pretty, and it's all lawyered up, and it'll say, you know, they have to abide by all state and federal laws, et cetera, et cetera. But then what they do is the actual work on the job is not done by Universal, but it's done by a series of labor brokers, who are generally immigrants themselves, although that's not the issue, that's not my focus tonight, who again, take, who take advantage of workers who are getting paid cash, and so the workers themselves are not technically Universal employees. They work for Mandrake, they work for somebody else, and aren't employees at all, they're all getting paid cash. And there is a level of insulation that exists, that protects Callahan and Universal from liability by saying, "Well, this is the other guy's fault, and of course, we didn't know anything about it, and you know, who can believe that this is going on on my job", and all the rest, which you can imagine. So Mandrake was a sub to Universal on this job, and I'll show you, I'll show you an example of how Universal functions. This is a little hard to read, but these are pictures taken surreptitiously, which is why it's hard to read, of the sign-in sheets on the job. And the parts that circle, this is the Universal sign-in sheets, but it says "subs", because they acknowledge that only a few of the workers on the job are actually employees of Universal. Everybody else is a sub, and everybody else is paid cash. 1400 Hancock, this is Redgate Real Estate. The general contractor there was a company called Delbrook, and the subcontractor there was a company called Metro Walls, which was also on the previous Zero Penn job as well, doing a portion of the work. They, again, subbed their work to a second-tier sub called Trinity. And Trinity was recently debahred from public work in Massachusetts on October 6th of last year until 2018, after being caught operating without workers' compensation. Now let me just tell you something, it is so rare that the enforcement actually happens, that to see something this much, they must have been really bad in order to get caught, because this is happening routinely without really, and, and I'm not here to cast aspersions on the regulatory agencies, this is very difficult. In the public sector, it's one thing, because you have what's called certified payroll records, in which people are required to list the name of the workers, and how much they get paid, et cetera. On the private, the private market, especially the residential, is like the Wild West. And there are no records whatsoever, and it's virtually impossible, unless we frankly bring it forward. And that's generally how most of these cases develop. The final example that I want to mention is the Quincy Y, both the construction of the Y and the current demolition going on. The owner is the South Shore YMCA, and has a long history with this job, of promises and commitments they made, which they reneged on in the wake of the recession, and they realized during the recession that they could get things done cheaper, and so they ended up using Callahan as well. Right now, what's going on, although I guess there's some, we brought this to the, to light, and the J. Keresi, which is the company working on the demolition, I've heard some folks say they're no longer on the job because of the things that we brought to light, and things we did. So, here's the human face of the underground economy. It's not just an abstraction, it's not just hundreds of millions of dollars lost to the state, lost to the fed, it's actually people. It's people who are being mistreated, exploited, and abused. So, tonight with us, we have Franklin Sane and Hugo Gionas, who worked for Keresi. Could you please stand up? These two gentlemen worked for Keresi on this job. Let me show you an example of a check that was made by Keresi. These guys were paid $13 an hour for dangerous destruction work, potentially exposed to asbestos. We don't know that for sure, but that's being currently being investigated. There were no deductions, federal, state were discounted, taken out of their checks, and not only were the checks without any deductions, which is the cash equivalent, but, as you can see, NSF, not sufficient funds. So not only were they paid in cash, which is illegal on the face of it, not only were they paid in cash, which is unethical on the face of it, they weren't even paid. And in fact, Mr. Sane and Mr. Gionas are still each owed two months back pay from that job. Two months back pay. They worked for two months, doing hard, physically demanding, challenging, dangerous work, and they didn't get paid for two months. There has now been a mechanics lien that's been filed on the project, in order to try to help get them the money that they are, that they are earning. Let me just say this, which is, union, non-union, I don't care, if someone is working on a job, they deserve to get paid. How much more fundamental and basic and American value is that? With union, non-union, immigrant, native, or, I don't care, they deserve to get paid. And this is going on, these two guys are an example of dozens and hundreds of workers in Quincy and surrounding communities who are being treated like this. So what's happening now? What's this at? There's a mechanics lien filed on this project, the Attorney General Environmental Protection Division is investigating for possible environmental concerns. We don't know, and I'm not here to raise, you know, false concerns. All we know is that there was asbestos that was removed during the demolition by an asbestos company that seemed to be doing it the right way, there was a subcontractor at Callahan, and then Keresi was also removing waste product without seemingly any concern for any potential asbestos exposure. We don't know, and we have, we said to the Y that we would pay for an environmental study to determine this, they have so far indicated that they have absolutely no interest in doing so, because typically what we find in the industry is what I call the frequent flyer theory. If someone is shirking on pay, likely they're shirking on safety, likely they're shirking on environmental stuff, because they're just cutting corners everywhere in order to save money. This is, gentlemen and ladies, this is about money. This is about taking advantage of people in order to come in and say, "Oh, I can do your building for $17 million, as opposed to this guy who can do it for $20 million. I can save you $3 million." What they don't say is how they're saving the $3 million. They're saving the $3 million for paying people cash, or not paying them at all, and by cutting corners in terms of quality and safety. So the Attorney General's Office, and if you have Ms. Mark here, is also investigating wage theft for these two gentlemen and other workers who were on the project, and, you know, I just want to thank them for coming. It's actually, in our world, it's a big deal for them to stand up and do this. These folks are without power, they're without influence, like me, like all of you, they're workers. And for them to come here and say, make a public statement of what happened to them is a, frankly, an example of courage. You know, my, my head is off to them for doing this, and I thank you for coming. So... Oops. So, let me wrap up, because they'll be happy to take any questions that you have. Where do you go from here? There's clearly a problem. There's clearly a problem. Quincy is a city of builders and working families, as Council Palmuji said, it's a blue collar city for the most part. It's a long and proud tradition of being, a lot of tradespeople live in this community. We have, I don't know, 200, 300 members who live here. It is a significant community. a significant community, you know, within the Commonwealth in terms of being a safe and decent place for blue collar working families to raise their families and, you know, and survive and thrive in this community. So what's going on? Well, recovery, it's a good thing. The recession was no fun. We had 40% unemployment in our ranks, and it was pretty awful. But one of the things that was really awful was that all the standards in the industry really dove to the bottom. The Callahans of the world really kind of relied on the Carises and the Universals to get them through the recession, get them work, because they could, by cheating, they could get, you know, additional work, or they could do it for cheaper. The recovery has expanded to Quincy. I don't, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Quincy's a hot place to be. It's a great place, you know, on the red line, it's a great place to, to commute into Boston. People want to live here, we can't afford to live in the city. I live in the city, and I know what it's like, in terms of what's going on with property values and the difficulty of young people to be able to live and raise families. So Quincy's become an attractive alternative. That means that you are in a hotspot, people want to build, if people want to build. It's a good thing. It also means that you have leverage. During the recession, a lot of cities and towns basically said to developers, please, anything, just build, just get some taxable, you know, property into the, onto the books, you know, please, we'll do anything to, to welcome you. There were TIFs, there were special permits, all sorts of things were granted. I would argue today that you guys, as a city council, are in a position of strength. Developers want to be here. And you don't have to say, oh, fine, whatever you want. You can say, alright, that's fine, as long as you build fairly, and build honestly, and don't build on the cheap. So what are we looking for? The ordinance that, that has been proposed and is being discussed is a big step in the right direction. It obviously has to pass legal muster, but we believe, and again, forget union, non-union, this is simply about the strict enforcement of state, federal, and municipal laws. It's about paying, paying people who are employees as employees, with all the obligations that go with it. And what does that do? It creates a level playing field. It creates a level playing field for employers who don't have to worry whether they're being underbid because someone is cheating. If they're being underbid because someone is more efficient, well, fine, that's competition. If they're being underbid because someone knows how to build a better mousetrap, that's fine, that's competition. But don't underbid illegitimate employer by cheating. That's, that is unhealthy and not good for anybody, and it results in the kind of situations that these two gentlemen in the back row here are facing. So, I'm not going to get into specifics, there's any number of things you can do. I would recommend that you consider in the TIFs and the special permits that you might grant in the, in the future when you're in a stronger position, have clawback language, which is language that would say that if someone violates one of the basic state, federal, and municipal laws or ordinances, that they lose those special tax incentives and permits that were granted by the city. That it should only be available to people who play by the rules. And I think that that's really what the city of Quincy can look forward to. The city obviously has an incredible history, an illustrious history. You all are the leaders as the city councilors. You all have taken this step, thanks to the leadership of Councilman Finn and Councilman Luigi, about bringing this issue to the forefront, to the light. I commend you for that. But I sincerely urge you, don't stop. There's no reason why you can't, why you can't insist on people who play by the rules building the buildings in the city of Quincy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Very informative. Again, quite a half an hour before our regulated schedule, the city council meeting starts. If you wouldn't mind answering some questions. I have a couple of, that's why I hate being up here. I defer to my colleagues for anyone who has questions, comments. Councilor Littler.
Thank you, Ms. Jim. Thank you for your presentation, Mark. Thanks for coming down and being so helpful. You two guys, back to you. Thank you for coming. I just, never mind, people on the jobs aren't supposed to be there. How about safety precautions? Let's just say somebody who's hurt that isn't supposed to be there. Let's just say, the general contractor, let's just take the YMCA for, for example. Callahan is the general contractor, Carisie's, you know, the subcontractor. Now you sub it out to another one that doesn't have general liability, Workman's Comp, in general. And somebody that's illegally supposed to be there gets hurt. Where does that lie? Does that lie to the next subcontractor higher, or does it go even higher to the general contractor?
Councilman Finn referred to one of my least favorite companies in the development world, Avalon. They, they had a job a few years ago, not here, but in Woburn, where a gentleman from Peru was, stepped on a piece of particle board that was on an elevator shaft. The particle board was half an inch, about three quarters of the particle board was plywood. It had rained, it was wet. He stepped on it, went through 45 feet to his death. When they went, when OCEAN went, they couldn't even figure out who he worked for, let alone who was responsible. They literally did not know who he worked for. Finally, they came up with an address that was a cold, third-floor, cold water flat in Lawrence, somebody's apartment, nobody was there, wasn't a business. That's what's happening. And that, by the way, was like a 60, 70 million dollar project. But I'm talking about, it's not going on on your neighbor's deck or porch. I'm talking about multi-million dollar projects where this is happening. So at the end of the day, they didn't know who to go after for liability. And you know, the guy's family was in Peru, what did they know? He was an immigrant worker, didn't know anything. So Avalon graciously offered to pay for his casket to send him back to Peru. That was what the family got for a debt. That's what a worker's worth of days. There's no way, that's what happens. There's no way really of knowing who ultimately is responsible. The Callahans of the world have lawyers, and they insulate themselves. So if something happens, they say, we didn't know. Look at the contract, it says you have to follow all applicable state and federal laws. So it just, it, it's system, which has been called the Fisher work pricing, just dumps all the responsibility entirely on the bottom, clear on the workers themselves.
Can you walk me through how you enforce this? How you get onto a job site and start saying, okay, let me see some documentation. Who does that? How does that get enforced?
That's a really good question. And now you're going to tap into a little of my frustration. The Attorney General's Office in this state is not only in charge of wage enforcement through the Fair Labor Division, this division, which City Mark is the new chief. There's also, as Rick Ross mentioned, that the Governor Patrick instituted a task force on the underground economy, which was a task force of all of the different agencies that have equity in this problem. Department of Revenue, Division Industrial Accidents, the Employment Systems Flow, DUA, as well as the Attorney General's Office. And the idea is that they would share cases and enforce across agency lines. I know this comes to shock to you, but state bureaucracies don't always cooperate really well. It did okay, and it got codified before Governor Patrick left. Governor Baker has yet to appoint someone to fill that position. I am meeting on, actually tomorrow, with someone who was sort of the closest thing to discuss this very same issue. But the problem is, they wait for cases to come to them. So these two guys have filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office. Hopefully, it will get acted on. We have had, their cases would involve Universal Drywall, which should be a slam dunk to take two to three years. And the problem is, construction doesn't work like that. And unless you issue stop work orders and get, and intervene on the street, with, people are just going to go ahead and do it, because their attitude will be, whatever sanctions are maybe, you're like slapping the rest compared to the amount of money I'm making, say it. And until that model of enforcement changes, until there's a higher degree of street enforcement, or on this job enforcement, we're going to see this problem grow. So that's advice you should direct to Ms. Mark, like you showed up.
Thank you, Mark, for being here.
Thank you for sponsoring the, for, for.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm sorry, anybody else?
Thank you very much, Mark, for your presentation. I feel like I'm missing something here in this entire presentation. It's very well put together. I appreciate the data that's been presented. I feel like we're skirting an issue, like it's too sided. From where does it always be sourced? From where are these employees being sourced?
Where do they source? It's not one place in particular, but there, what has happened is the growth of these so-called labor brokers, who are people with smartphones with, the name's 150 people in it. And Universal will call Mendray, Mendray will call one of these labor brokers and say, I need six guys on this job, and they'll come. And they are primarily addicted from the immigrant community, newly arrived immigrants. Why? Because they can take advantage of hard working. They've got a strong workout to get on, unless they're not necessarily the type of skill, but they work hard and don't complain. If you want to get 13 bucks an hour, they'll pay.
So I hear you say immigrants, but are we going as far to say documented or undocumented labor?
Combination.
Okay. So it sounds like a two-sided issue that needs to be handled from both, how are we supposed to assist immigrants coming into this country that want to support the American economy, that want to be part of the labor system, but also to make sure that the employers are taking advantage of them before that fact? So I don't think it's just enforcement from the labor side. I also think it's assistance from the government itself, making sure that we can provide regular wage or, you know, working conditions for undocumented immigrants.
Well, I, you know, it's obviously a huge national debate about, I think the one thing everybody agrees on is our current immigration system is dysfunctional, it's broken. And I would argue that it's broken for a reason, that it serves the interests of some people in society very well to have a broken system. If people were either afforded or made legal, or you know, two extremes.
Right.
One or the other, everything would change. But to have this sort of gray zone that we live in now allows for unscrupulous employers to take advantage of working people. I don't blame the workers, that's, that's, they're not my target, they're not, I, to them, the employers to take advantage of.
No, of course, but I just want to bring to public light that this is a much greater issue.
It is.
I don't want to just say that it's the labor, you know, the employers taking advantage of labor, of someone that's coming to this country looking for any amount of money that they can make, because it's probably better from.
That's correct.
From sampling from where they can.
That's correct. I will say this. This problem really began, at least in this area, I've been doing this for a long time. And it was in the previous recession, in 1989 to 1992, when a lot of, a bunch of companies decided they were going to try this independent contractor group. And they, well, it wasn't with immigrant workers then.
Yep.
It was with native born workers, and it was just a way of saving money. And you know, some people wanted to work for cash for, they had their own reasons, they had to want to get away from the hell, wanting payment, whatever. There's reasons why people want to work for cash, right? And so there was enough people to make it possible. But when they, it is sort of, it's been a perfect storm when we grew up in the immigrant workforce. That, that has made for a ready, going, and able workforce to be taken advantage of in this way.
Right. And again, I appreciate you with your presentation today. I appreciate my colleagues bringing this issue to light, but just want to make sure that we're talking about this, the Universal sex attempt that's, uh, also undocumented.
Thank you, Councilor Kane. The other councilors on the right side, Councilor Little Forrest.
Thank you, Councilwoman Luigi. One of the things that would be done, really, Councilwoman Luigi, was the ordinance, was our responsible employer ordinance.
Yes.
And part of that was charged to top of was the working conditions and expectations. I think it was apprentice program, insurance, you know, requiring that whoever's working on any of these projects have provided insurance to the employees, pensions, you know, things that, to benefits that the unions in our area are pretty well, pretty well known for. The legal system took, said that, that, I don't know, took it out, that we had to, we couldn't incorporate that into our ordinance.
Right.
Right? You mentioned some clawback language. I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is some information, I'm all about learning about the communities who are doing this well. You talk about us incorporating clawback language. Who's doing that? Who should we be looking to, to incorporate that language? Do you have any examples that you're familiar with offhand?
Okay. So I actually introduced the first responsible employer ordinance in 1995 in Cambridge. And then there were about 36 cities and towns that adopted it in New England over the years. A judge, as you correctly point out, and Quincy was one of the test cases, ruled that it was preempted by federal law, that you couldn't make requirements about health insurance and retirement security and pensions. She also said that you couldn't make requirements about apprenticeship, which I think there's, I think that was a questionable legal basis, because those are state certified, not federal. Well, they're both. So I do believe that there's still an opportunity to do that. But a couple of things about that ordinance, it only applied to public work.
Right.
It would have had an impact on the, on the work in RH Taylor in this building. But on the private stuff, so we have said, forget all that, okay? A judge ruled that that's a dead issue at this point. But simply treating employees as employees, providing workers' compensation insurance. So let me just tell you how it works. So Universal Drywall, if you go on the website, they'll have workers' compensation insurance, but their policy only covers a handful of people, because all of these subs, who are subs, are subs, because the Division of Industrial Accidents, which governs workers' compensation, will issue a stop work order if someone has no workers' compensation insurance coverage at all. So people buy de minimis policies in order to say they have one. But, but it only covers 10%, 15% of the people who actually work on their jobs. And the rest of them don't have any workers' comp, so that if, if somebody in one of those jobs that I mentioned got hurt, there's a job in Waltham, the guy working for Universal, for Callahan, for Mendray, got hurt. He's hurt a rear-ending injury. He's still trying to figure out, this is a year later, whether he can get workers' compensation, because he worked for someone who didn't have workers' compensation coverage and paid cash. So there's, there's that liability and that exposure. So in the clawbacks, I do believe that there would be, you know, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but I do believe that there is legal, a legal basis for the kind of things that you're suggesting.
Any sounds offhand if you have language?
What's happened now in the wake of the decision in Quincy and New Bedford, or Fall River, rather, about their responsible employers, every sort of is recalibrating and starting to look at the kind of legislation we're suggesting. So the answer is no, but I, but I think you're going to be seeing that, a wave of those in the near future.
One of the things that you referenced earlier was the sign-in sheets. How do you know who's working on the job? Maybe you can, you know, educate me, and also keep in mind that the reality TV show here, our Apple viewers, is tuning in and understanding. So you showed up examples of some sign-in sheets. Can you just talk about why you're signing in to the sheets for these jobs? Why that layer? And what oversight the city has to ensure, you know, where's the backup to reconcile who you are, what you have, and what oversight currently under our, our municipal, state, federal laws, and they must all adhere to? Because when you talked about, you know, special permits, that being in the language, could you elaborate a little bit on that first?
Yeah, that's a really good question. On private job sign-in sheets, they're not required. On private jobs, frankly, nothing is required. They had sign-in sheets because Callahan decided that they wanted to have a list of people who were on the job. That was a decision by Callahan. But it seems to me that in a tip or a special permit that the city, that City Quincy issues, that you can require sign-in sheets. You know, clerking the works might be too much in terms of budget, but certainly there's, there's no reason not to have a requirement of sign, a verifiable requirement of sign-in sheets. On publicly-funded jobs, every contractor is required to issue a certified payroll for everybody who worked for them during that week, and that's publicly available. But, but the three out of the four jobs that I mentioned are private. And there's, like I said, it's the Wild West.
Okay, so we have a city job that you referenced. And there are other contractors that have issued, particularly, I know you said Conneys and Hall, I think you were referencing the City Hall piece.
Yep.
And, you know, whether it was the Drywall, it was different trade. They're certifying their payroll, submitting it to the work, the PM, who's been not going that far down in the paperwork. How is that, where are the disconnect? We should be looking for some oversight as far as enforcement on public jobs?
Okay, on public jobs, the certified payroll records are available to the city of Quincy, they're available actually to anybody. It takes a while to get them, but you can get them, and you can, you can compare what's on the certified payroll records to what's, what would be on a sign-in sheet. And you'll find, chances are, with some of these contractors, you'll find a discrepancy. We have seen certified payroll records where people aren't even smart enough to lie. You know, you fill them out under pains and penalties of perjury and fraud, blah, blah, blah. But they're not even smart enough to lie. They actually put, you know, Joe Smith, 40 hours, independent contractor, and put a number down there, you know, that's an hourly number times 40. So sometimes you can, it's very simple to catch them and to have that kind of oversight.
And what, I guess, last question on the YMCA, obviously has been a bone of contention for me and my constituents. And to hear that every time we ask for a timeline, YMCA is a terrific neighbor, I mean, terrific community partner, they run great programs, they're a great community partner, they've been a lousy neighbor. And I'll use my share, share kind of border in that area. And it's been frustrating with any lack of communication of what's happening in the project, not from any, not from lack of follow-up from me, believe me. But they gave this timeline, not there. Now I'm hearing that Carisie has been fired from the Y, and workers stopping, seeing the loss of our backup enable. You know, what is it that you're seeing other municipalities do with these situations? Because you talked about, with the clawback language, maybe permit revoked, we want to see, we as a municipality, we want these projects done, right? We want these projects permitted, and we want the development to continue, but in a positive and responsible way. So whether it's a fine, you know, you're seeing any other, I guess I'm looking for some advice as to what it is we can do to make things better here.
Well, I was Well, I was hoping actually that, you know, out of this presentation, that maybe there'd be a follow-up and some very concrete measures be proposed. I'm not prepared tonight to run through a list of various things, but, yeah, I mean, that one has been very infuriating in particular. They've made a bunch of commitments, they reneged on them. I think they're embarrassed, I think they're sort of in the CYA mode. I'm sure as a city council covering that district, you know that.
I just want good, good information on that too.
Yeah.
I just want to go shout out because while the property union is here for your presentation, I see one of my constituents, two of my constituents, the Electricians Union as well as the Pageant Union being represented. And I do appreciate you beginning this session and I appreciate, you know, Council Finn and Council Palomucci and the board's sponsorship of this bill. I would be very interested to hear collectively from some of the other labor unions of their experiences because, you know, I have heard that's it, the company's changing their names. Why are they changing their names? What's happening? Their employees aren't getting paid, their vendors are getting stiffed. And that's a problem. We don't want that in, particularly when you're hearing it's one of your own projects.
No.
You know, when you're on a municipal project. So I really appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for what you've done too on this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Forrest. Just to follow up on the point you made, it's my intention as chair of this discussion with Councilman and the board is that at one of the next meetings that we have is to have a public hearing whereby we invite folks from the community, from the business community as well as residents or whoever wants to weigh in on this issue. And I expect at that time, we'll take testimony from other trades or organizations that face or wish to be heard. But we did invite, we clearly invited, or sent a letter indicating that we have a hearing this evening, invited to attend to every union in this state. This is something that I think we'll continue to get into. It's not a one night, we can solve this thing in an hour kind of thing, kind of issue. It's, you know, it's under threat. I have to ferret the information and the facts out for me. I hope that we will have the opportunity to do that for the public hearings and the oversight. I do have a couple of questions for you, Mark. Are you comfortable, you've given us some contractors' names, these general contractors. Is this a good list of, is there a better list of general contractors that we could talk to if we wanted to take testimony, we could invite general contact, contractor to come up here? Perhaps, you don't have to give it to me on the fly, but if you could submit it to me via email, give me a call.
We'd happen to do that.
Because, you know, as with everything, I try and be fair on that one. Let's invite these folks up here and talk about their side of the story if there is one. And so if you could provide that to me at a later time, I would certainly be willing to invite them and hear what they have to say relative to the concerns that you brought to light on this body this evening. Additionally, I don't know, you probably have, sorry, you probably retain the services of the attorney, right, to the human conference. Perhaps if you could, not this evening, but as we further this discussion in more committee hearings, if you could get us some information, maybe some bullet points of, not necessarily information, but some, some ideas, suggestions, thoughts, or what municipal ordinance could look like, some different things we could do. You've touched upon a couple of different areas tonight that's kind of got my wheels spinning a little bit. There's a couple of different, we give a special permit from this body, from the council, we could add language and permit, as you suggested, clawback language. We don't permit every project, but we do have the ability to pass ordinance that would affect certainly every public project and potentially every private project that happens in the city. So, we definitely have some role here where I think we can address the issue. And from my perspective, it's, you know, let's see what we can do, what we can put in place to municipality by way of ordinance to bring this out from undercover, to try and prevent this public name wheel for everybody. And if that doesn't work, we can continue to work and work and work until we get to something that really does. I was very disappointed in the federal court decision on responsible ordinance, or responsible court ordinance. And, you know, I drafted the first piece of legislation that I drafted and got passed in my service in the council six years ago. I agree with you, I think that the decision on the basis of the apprenticeship programs is a stretch.
Yes, I agree with you.
The city doesn't really like the ordinance, the ordinance, probably for the city. Lastly, I really, I really struggle with this, and this is kind of maybe just moving the thought to continue the conversation. If they're forming, because I presume that some of these are LLCs, overnight corporations, so, you know, as, as former Governor Jimmy Romney famously said, corporations are people too. Corporations are entities under the law. So, a person who is a sole owner of a corporation isn't necessarily responsible under the law to transgress from corporation. Corporation's responsible. You can find a corporation and the corporation can do a lot of business and start a new corporation the next day. So, if these independent contractors are forming different LLCs, different corporations, you know, one for every job, and then folding afterwards, that to me really seems like difficult things to get our hand around, handling. And I wonder, I wonder if there isn't something that we could do, perhaps this would relate most to public jobs, but if there isn't something we can do where we require in our bid documents that the general contractor assume all legal liability for the subcontract, whoever they are. They're the ones hiring them, you know, we're footing a bill, taxpayers footing a bill, we want some standards. They're the ones hiring the subcontractors, they should be responsible. They shouldn't be able to wipe their hands and say, oh, gee, I don't know, that guy just disappeared. Is that something that you think, I mean, is that heading in a right direction or?
Yeah. There's, there have been a variety of bills that have proposed in various states around the country to kind of kick the responsibility upstairs to where it belongs, up the food chain, to the general contractor. As you can imagine, that has been greeted with a lot of screaming and hollering. Oh no, how am I responsible for something I don't know about, blah, 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 you know, I took a low bid, you know, I can't police it. There's any number of excuses why they can't do it. But until they are held accountable at some level, politically, economically, financially, whatever it is, this will continue to go on because it's, you know, free monkeys, hear no evil, see no evil, you know, speak no, that's what, that's what's going on here. And there will be a lot of pushback, I can tell you, because we tried it. But ultimately, to say that they don't know what's going on is a joke.
Someone, the buck has to stop somewhere. It can just roll endlessly downhill to some issues, utilization, a company that dissolves, as you said, goes to a second story apartment where there's no one answering the door.
Right.
There's literally no one financially responsible for individual loses life or something. That is, trying to...
That's obviously extreme. But usually wage theft is not extreme for team. And again, finding the responsible party is very difficult.
Especially as you said, that some of the folks, quite frankly, that they're relying on in certain communities, don't have either wherewithal or the understanding that they can come through. So, I think it is important, we'll continue this conversation. Any other councillors' last words? It's about seven thirty. Councilman? Right, Mark, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate your membership, coming here and all the folks that turned up. I'm not going to sit around and end the hearing, I'm going to continue the hearing, we'll have another date, we'll let you know when we do. And I look forward to talking to you in between those dates to get some additional information.
Yeah, Councilwoman Palomucci, with respect to one, we would be happy to make our attorneys available. They've already met with Council Finn. That's a service we would more than provide.
Could that be very helpful, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.